Welcome to the Marion City Council Special Meeting Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and in the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please show all council persons present. Next up, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council persons like to make a statement regarding that? Hearing none and proceeding forward, public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Do we have any public comment pertaining to non-agenda items today? Seeing no movement, I'm proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Up first, we have adoption of ordinance 10-2025, city attorney requirements. There were no changes from the introduction, and I am looking for a motion in regards to it. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
I'm looking for a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns by council?
I have a couple of comments. So, under power and duties, it says, uh, due to a city's illegal lawyer, such duties in this connection may be required when requested by the mayor, city manager, or city council. When required by the mayor or city manager, the city attorney shall forge written or verbal opinions upon any legal affairs of the city. And I believe that council should be interjected there also after city manager.
I'm fine with that. I mean, um...
Yeah, it's right. Right. Okay. Then, the other, the second one that I have, three, the second one that I have relating to paragraph two under C powers and duties, city attorney shall review and provide legal sufficiency, opinions, and ordinances, only when specifically requested to do so by mayor, city manager, or city council. If he's not being requested to review ordinances and legal agreements, who is doing that? And are we engaging, if we're providing, especially in terms of the ordinances and legal sufficiency, are we then engaging in the practice of law without a license? Because if we're providing an opinion on legal sufficiency, that has to come from a bar-admitted attorney.
So technically, code, contracts, agreements, bond leases, and other legal documents of the city do not need legal sufficiency as it's not required by the charter. The only reason, I mean, you can ask a city attorney to provide the legal sufficiency on those documents. For instance, you can actually do a charter amendment without legal sufficiency, which is higher than a code change, or a contract, or anything like that. The only reason that we currently have it required is because it's required by our code currently. But the charter doesn't make that requirement. This was something that was added later down the road when they added the city attorney position. Because there's towns who do operate without an appointed city attorney. What's basically happening here, and one of the reasons this was suggested, was to make sure that, I mean, there's stuff where we're changing a word, verbiage, and code, and a contract, that has no detrimental effect to the actual language. And there's even ordinances that we know that are lawful and can go through, that we don't need city attorney review for. We're basically wasting taxpayer money to do it when it's not required. And not only that, it also gets hung up. I mean, there's a queue of items, even currently, for items to get done at the city for the city attorney. So I think the idea here is to basically kind of backtrack that a bit to where if the council as a body decides that they want legal review on something, or they want the city attorney at a meeting, they can make that request. The same thing at the city manager, if he sees an ordinance, and he's like, "I don't feel comfortable with this. We need to get legal opinion." The city manager can make that request. The mayor could make that request. And then the next thing would be, you know, let's say you're an individual council person, you could go to the city manager and be like, "Hey, you know, explain your reason, explain why you think a legal review would be needed." And the city manager can also make that request. The idea is to kind of cut back on frivolous spending of an attorney who costs, you know, anywhere between $200 to $250 an hour, and you're going to get charged for at least 15 minutes at a time by just sending a simple email, when most of these questions can realistically be answered by the city manager. That's why we have paid staff to answer a lot of these questions. So it's really trying to curtail some of the frivolous spending, I'd say, on legal fees and things of that nature. But again, there's, you don't have to interpret the law. Your council, your legislators, you make the law. If you really think something is on the edge of legal sufficiency, you can request that. And again, you have a city manager who should also bring that up if he's feeling that it isn't meeting that need, which is something like when we talked about the sign ordinance, for instance, you know, there were some legal surety questions there, in which case we were like, "Hey, let's go back and get some legal surety on that as well." But you don't need it for every document that goes before the city. And not only that, it's still given the council, it's still given the city manager, and the mayor to make those requests. So there's, you're still able to make those requests. It's just basically cutting back on things getting tied up in a queue.
And I'm not opposed to saving the city money. I just want to make sure that we are not putting the city in jeopardy by engaging in practice we shouldn't be. That's, you know, I believe, I did not go back and find specifically where in code it says, but I thought that there was something in code about all ordinances had to be reviewed for legal sufficiency.
That's what this is changing. So in code is where it made that requirement. It's not required per charter or per state, for instance. That's just something that was added down the road. And basically, it's kind of the final tie-up of, I would say, if a city attorney doesn't agree with something the council, or something's trying to get pushed, you know, that's a way that they could basically fight back on that, would be that legal sufficiency, whether it's right or wrong. But my, the general idea behind all this, at least, would be that we have plenty of documents that currently get tied up and needing legal sufficiency. We're paying money to do it when we know full well that we have the city manager, for instance, who is the authorized individual per the charter to do contracts, but now they also still have to go for legal sufficiency and spend that money. And some of these contracts are pretty cut and dry. It's the same thing for ordinances. There's ordinances that we do hear that are pretty cut and dry. Think of the annual, what is it, water, or the monthly water allocation. That's technically an ordinance that has to go for legal sufficiency. So that's money being spent there as well. And again, this is still allowing that tool to be used by city council, the city manager, and the mayor. And like I said, an individual council person, this is how it's supposed to have been going from even before this, was that if an individual council person had a legal concern, they'd go to the city manager, talk it out, and again, if that legal concern was valid or definitely appropriate, the city manager couldn't answer that question, then it would get sent to legal, because it doesn't make sense to basically individual people being able to bill the city at a cost of $250 an hour, or $200 an hour, depending on your attorney, or more. And again, that's, this isn't, this isn't to get around that requirement, but there's plenty that we do, and even all of this stuff on this list today, none of it is particularly, what would be the proper word, you know, there's not a lot of legalese to it. You are the legislators. You can legislate. And again, the same way that this was added, this was added through the city council making an attorney position, saying they wanted legal review on every document. You can go back and say you don't want legal review on every document.
And I think in my mind, to deal with kind of the gist of what you're getting at, is it specifically says that council can request these legal reviews, right? So like, there's a mechanism that if, as a body of council, feel like we need legal review on any specific thing, or any slate of things, then we request it, and we have the mechanism of getting it. So more about not wasting time and resources.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to saving money and not, and preventing the waste of resources. I just don't want to leave the city at that...
Yeah. Well, and if there's anything we're doing that you think we need legal opinion on, right? Like, that's when you raise it, and that's when we get it. But if we're doing something standard boilerplate, like, there's no point in getting the attorney, the attorney involved. And I think, in my mind, that's what this is changing, is instead of everything going to them and, you know, wasting everybody's time and city dollars, like, mechanism to do that.
But be mindful, when it says the council, again, you guys are a body. Be mindful of that. You're three, or you're five individuals that make up a body, you know, three of you make up a quorum, three of you can sense that you want the city attorney's opinion on an ordinance, for instance, that would kick it back to legal sufficiency for review. The next thing, again, your next avenue would be, as an individual council person, would be to go to the city manager. And again, he can explain the rationale of why you don't need that legal review, or why it's not necessary. But, you know, if even he's sitting there pondering, "Hey, yeah, we should probably get this double-checked," he can then make that request. Or again, even me, the mayor, you could come to me and be like, "Hey, I don't believe this meets legal sufficiency, or any kind of, yeah, I don't think this is lawful," for instance. We could go back and look at it. But even now, you know, there's questions over certain parts of the code right now, whether certain parts of that code are lawful to begin with, and even those had legal sufficiency. So stuff does get through legal sufficiency that is also unlawful, and there's instances of that currently.
And there's also case law that changes, that sets precedent for things that may have been adopted before anyone challenged that particular idea, so...
Their legal sufficiency doesn't necessarily...
It doesn't, it's not, right. It's not forever necessarily.
Yeah.
Right.
Additional on it?
It's important to have the attorney available to answer legal questions during the council meeting. Maybe not every time, but to establish this legal sufficiency. There are a lot of questions that a layperson, a council person, won't even think of regarding legal sufficiency. And it's a real benefit to have a legal mind with us to point out that this could be suspect, or this could be illegal if we do, if we move forward like this. There's a lot of ethical questions like that that could be brought before us. I think it's important to, before council votes on legislation, that they have a legal review, or have a legal opinion, whether the council's here in person, or whether he submits some kind of written statement, I guess is immaterial, but I think it's important to have that legal opinion on virtually everything we do.
Well, technically, this doesn't stop him from submitting legal opinion after you guys have adopted something. And to be blunt, you know, thinking over the past couple of council meetings, you guys have adopted ordinances without legal, without, without the attorney here. And again, you could go back and say it's because he's going to get legal sufficiency later, but if the idea is...
That's worth it under a handicap, though. I mean, when you have that, the legal piece answered, you can make a better decision.
But that's what I'm saying, you know, you guys have, I think, what, probably half of the meetings, maybe, since the city attorney was brought back, he hasn't been at the meetings? So it can't be that important. But, you know, when I...
He's present at video time, I mean, you know...
Well, sometimes he's present.
Yeah, he has missed a number of meetings.
Yes, he has missed a number of meetings. And again, it isn't about the performance of that. This really comes down to, you don't need a city attorney at every meeting. There's plenty of councils that operate without a city attorney at every meeting. You're basically paying somebody to sit there on video at $250 an hour at the taxpayer's dime to maybe not even chime in on the item.
You know, that's, well, there's just...
You also have the opportunity to ask...
There's other questions that need to be answered today that we need a legal opinion on, and we don't have it. We can't get that.
Well, if you're questioning something in the packet, you have plenty of time to review the packet before the meeting and ask the city manager or the mayor questions that they can bring up to the city attorney, if they find it necessary. So I don't, I don't really see this being a problem at all.
And again, we...
You have access to the lawyer. It's just through the city manager or the mayor.
And you still have access through the body. I mean, you come in on the workshop, you see something on the agenda, "Hey, can we get consensus to get..."
You know, the mayor's filter, or the city manager's filter, is not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for direct contact with a legal mind to make my own decisions.
If you're looking for direct contact as an individual, even our current code doesn't allow that. It speaks to the council getting a legal opinion, and the council is a body. What it really comes down to is, again, is the body, if you want legal representation on your next meeting, you request it, he comes to the next meeting. Heck, you can even say city manager as a person, "Hey, could we really get that city attorney at the next meeting over this item?" "Sure." You still have plenty of access. You have three different routes of access to the city attorney. The idea here is that he is not the personal attorney of council people. He is the city's attorney. And again, every hour that you use of that, every email that you send is at least a 15-minute billable period, and what is that, at least $50 for every email that you send? I just...
But I think the, I think the backstop for that is what Rachel had said, that, say, at a workshop, we decide that we need, we need to have somebody look this over to make sure everything's right, we can have the attorney at the, at the next meeting on that Monday, and be giving his opinion on it. So it's still, we still have the backstop of having the attorney's opinions on things.
I guess I see a lot of instances where I would, I would need a legal opinion before moving forward. And maybe not every time, but certainly many times, issues come up that, that question, either legal questions or ethical questions, need to be answered on the spot. And, you know, and the myth of transparency that you project is poked without that legal opinion.
Again, if that was so much of a concern, we wouldn't have our current legal, our current city attorney, because we, there's multiple instances of them not showing up to multiple meetings at this point. And again, that's fine, because realistically...
The law is the law, so whoever the attorney is, will be able to render an opinion based on his training knowledge, and that is why we pay for an attorney to advise us on matters, so that we don't...
What's wrong with synthesizing a list of questions that come up during a meeting, or a workshop, or your own review of the packets as we get them, and sending them into the city manager, or the mayor, or whoever? I hear what you're saying, right? But I am kind of like, why does an attorney need to sit there for two, three, four hours if maybe one question comes up? Maybe two? Right? Like, that doesn't seem like an ineffective use of resources, right? Like, that's...
I don't have much problem with the ordinance, other than the fact that there needs to be some way to reach the attorney on a direct basis and ask questions regarding a particular issue. You know, the smokescreen of saving money by not having the attorney here is kind of critical, considering all the other personnel we're adding, and how we're expanding our budget leaps and bounds, and cutting our rates, and doing everything else to injure our financial well-being, and we worry about...
Also to increase efficiency and effectiveness, though.
It's like swatting the net in order to get rid of the mayor, I guess.
And just, and just to clarify, we haven't increased the budget other than the standard increases. I mean, there is no, there was no inflation of the budget to plan for the additional, for the additional personnel. We cut in departments to make those.
Did we add any personnel to the budget?
We have two, no, we have two in here, but we made, I made, I sat down with the city manager and made cuts to the departments to afford those personnel. There wasn't an expansion of the budget for them.
Yeah, we're not spending more money to add, to add more capacity and human resources. That's, I think, the point the mayor's right making.
And again, you know, that's, that's part of why we're doing stuff like this, is to really kind of cut, kind of rein in some of that spending. Again, there's a, I'm trying to think during my time, you know, there's been questions of, I need a legal opinion of whether the mayor can issue a proclamation. Well, you could go to the city manager and ask that question, or you could go to me and ask that question. I mean, the mayor can issue a proclamation. But again, money was spent for that email, when it's a, it's a very simple question to get answered. And that's kind of why you have the city manager, is if you have these questions, I mean, more than likely, there are some of them he's going to be able to answer for you. The council has the authority to fire the city manager. You, if you were asking him a, yeah, the council, I'm bringing that up for this, though, is that the council can fire the city manager. I mean, if you bring something to him, and you feel he is not meeting your, he's not hearing your request, if you want to get it sent to legal, you still have authority over the city manager. I mean, there is no, you still have the ability to get legal opinion. There's three different methods and avenues here to do it. And it's kind of the same thing, I mean, we know we can operate a meeting without a city attorney. We've done it multiple times over the past two years I've been here. So it definitely isn't a requirement. And there's plenty of municipalities out there that do it without a city attorney as That's my closing on it. Anybody else comment?
Council needs direct access to legal opinions. That's my opinion, and that's all I'm going to say about it. That's the whole point I want to make.
The other, the other comment. Shit, what did I do? Excuse me. The voice of God. The other, the other point that I had was under the meeting attendance, and I raised this last week, about shall attend meeting of the planning commission, board of appeals, economic development commission, or any other city body, were requested by the mayor, the city manager, city council, and I think that we ought to add, or the body, or consensus of the body holding the meeting. If, you know, I think that if you've got, those independent boards and commissions feel that they need that sort of legal backup, that they ought to be able to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
Problem with that?
So that was, let me get that, that was consensus of boards, let's just say consensus of boards of council.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Because they're technically all boards of council. Jim?
You taking a note there?
Line 34.
Yep, so that'll be D2, add also consensus of boards of council. And on C1, add, when required by the mayor, city manager, or council for furnished writings.
Okay.
I am now looking for a motion to approve...
As amended.
As amended would be, yeah. As amended.
Motion approved.
Look for a second.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns before we head into vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Up next, we have Resolution 2025-11. So the last time we talked, the idea was to expand this to include workshops and public comment pertaining to the individual agenda items. When talking with staff, you know, one thing we want to make sure is that there's still decorum for the meetings, so one of the things we brought up for suggestion would be, additional public comment pertaining to specific agenda items will be allowed during council workshops. Following a sign-up with the city clerk, such comments by those registered to speak will be heard following the council discussion of each agenda item. Individuals who have elected to speak will be called to the podium at the appropriate time. That is just to maintain a decorum, so people aren't coming back and forth to the podium as the council meeting is being conducted. And that gives everybody a fair shot to actually talk about the agenda items. Other than that, I'm trying to think, there was, and again, this is, this is for both the Monday and the workshop meetings, so there is now two opportunities to talk about that.
So are we going to...
Or actually, council workshops is the agenda item.
Right, they can, they can comment contemporaneously on the agenda items at the workshops if they have signed up with the...
Yep. And basically, very simply, you walk in, you go to the clerk saying, "Hey, I want to speak on this specific item." When we get to the item, they'll flag that we have a public comment, you'll be called to the podium. Again, that's an expansion to allow people to talk on those individual items, but we also want to make sure that we're not, it's not becoming, I guess, maybe a town hall back and forth at the podium.
Right, it should still be the same, we listen and not necessarily respond, because it's not really the place to do that, so. The concerns ought to be hurried if they have concerns over what they've heard in the discussion regarding, regarding whatever the item is, so I'm good with it.
Any, well, I'll go to, looking for a motion in regards to that.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
I actually support this. With one caveat, I looked at the rules that were speaking on the monitor as I was sitting here, and as long as we follow those rules, I think it'll work. But including holding people to a time, as the county does, I can tell you from experience, the reason that, that rule was dropped, and we've always had comments at all the meetings, up until a point where we had a group of individuals that would come in and monopolize the meeting. And they would literally tie the, tie the meeting in knots, and it would prolong it forever, and we had to institute that three-minute rule in order just to hold some semblance of order. So if we follow the rules that we've already established, I can support this.
The three-minute rule still holds, you know, and here it does say, "The presiding officer shall retain the authority to manage public comment period, including the imposition of reasonable timelots and other procedural measures when necessary to maintain decorum and fairness." You know, my biggest thing is, is if we have one speaker, again, that might be a time where you can maybe let them speak past the three minutes. I mean, because there's nobody else lined up to speak. Obviously, you know, the idea here would be if we have 10 people who are all lining up to speak, yes, we'd have to, we'd have to implement the three-minute period and make sure people are following that. But realistically, if two or three people are showing up to talk, you know, it's, as the current presiding officer in the mayor's seat, you know, my opinion is let them be heard. You know, we're not in such a time crunch that three people are really going to prolong a meeting more than we've already done it. But again, I'm more than willing to accommodate that as a presiding officer, if we're definitely, if we're getting more people queued into talking and whatnot.
Yeah, I think we can apply some common sense here.
Yeah, right.
Everybody should have a sense to say their piece, but they need to do it respectfully, and...
Yeah, of course. Decorum matters.
No, no two-hour filibusters.
That's right. None of us want to be here for that long.
Yeah.
And technically, again, as council, you guys can always also close down...
Yeah, motion closed.
Yeah, you can, you can close it.
Yeah. And, you know, but like I say, as long as people don't abuse the privilege, I see no reason we can't do this.
And that's what, if it is becoming a problem, again, it can be readdressed as simply as going back to resolution.
Yep.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I am looking, or hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Up next, we had, we head over to the water and sewer rates. You guys should have seen an updated one, because there was some language that changed in the third paragraph towards the end. Basically, it just said, it changed from the prior year's rate to the current rates. It's just, I'm cleaning up.
Oh. The old one said maintain, then the new one says reduce.
Yeah, maintain. This one says reduce. Again, this is a 5% reduction from the previous rates. I don't remember the numbers off my head, but it was like seven, what, two? Again, I don't remember the...
Seven twenty-five or something.
Yeah, it was like seven, yeah. Right around there, and the other one's like fourteen, nine, maybe.
Yeah, it was double.
But again, it's 5% from the previous rates that we had been adopting. I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
Trying to find the, I don't think I have the correct one here.
Here's the correct one.
Motion to adopt.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
I guess, I guess I'm confused, because this...
You're looking at the workshop one. You said this is the actual water rates.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, because I downloaded that out of the packet, so it's...
I might have a copy of what the previous one looked like.
That should be the, well, that's part of it, the last page, that was the part that I was going to...
Again, basically, the other one just said here, instead of from the previous year's rates, it said maintain from the previous year's rates. Maintain was replaced with reduced. It was just a cleaning up of the language in there.
Sorry, I actually have a question. Since we just adopted the resolution for public comment, should we not, does that apply now?
It doesn't, because the agenda was already created. And we talked about this, whether we could apply it before or after.
Got it, okay.
That'll be, that applies to the next meeting.
I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, wait a minute, if this applies now, then they want to talk about it, they can talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I...
The agenda will reflect it. There's a couple, like, we'll have a thing on the, sorry, we'll have a thing on the agenda that says, right, right above resolution... The agenda will reflect it. Um, there's a couple, like, we'll have a thing on the, sorry, we'll have a thing on the agenda that says, right, right above resolution ordinances and agreements, the public comment pertaining to non-agenda items and agenda items is what it'll say there. And then right below that, it's gonna have a thing in, um, oh. It's basically gonna have a little blurb that says, um, if you would like to discuss a particular agenda item, please see the clerk for registration. So it's gonna, all that'll be kinda stated on the agenda. Is that?
Like a footnote or something like that?
Right, right, for, for those who want to speak, um, after council discusses each agenda item at that point, right, there will be a sign up. Otherwise, it will just be like we do now.
Yeah. Sorry.
So anyway, I, but, so getting back to the matter at hand, um, yeah, I am, I'm opposed to, to, not that I'm opposed to reducing the water and sewer rates, um, but I, I, I'm just concerned that, um, you know, right now, we can do this. What happens if next year we have to raise the rates back again? I just think that that's gonna be, uh, a tough ask, that we turn, you know, we, you know, are we gonna start fluctuating the rates every year? Uh, we've held the same rates for now, what, the last eight years?
Yeah, they reduced them in twenty seventeen.
Right. And we've been able to hold the rates, which is great, um, you know, and, and there is a, a, I guess there's a five percent surplus, which is what caused you to, uh, reduce the rates five percent.
The surplus is bigger than five, but the idea is, is the workshop is gonna be the follow-up to basically say, what does administration suggest on what the water rates look like? Again, this speci, this specifically ties into the workshop as well, cause the idea is, is when we come back in April and they have the workshop, the idea is administration's basically gonna present a massive, comprehensive overview of the water system, and they're gonna provide a rationale of why we're reducing, why we're increasing, or why we weren't, why we're maintaining rates. And the idea is to basically try to conjure up as much public involvement as we can. Um, again, we're gonna really advertise as best we can, try to get people out, and we wanna educate them no matter which way the rates end up going next year. But I think, um, you know, just to, just to give one example, um, when I look at some of the other cities, um, when I go to MML and whatnot, you know, some of the ARPA funding that was used there were towards, uh, civil projects and things of that nature. You know, we used our ARPA money towards, uh, infrastructure here in Tonny Town. And I guess the question is, is, you know, where's the bane for the residents' buck of what happened there? And again, we have future projects coming up, you know, same thing, we, we have money set aside for them. I currently feel we're in, we're in a position to make a five percent cut, and I believe the workshop, you know, whichever way it goes, that'll be the time for staff to really explain the rationale, the rationale behind maintaining, reducing, or increasing rates. And again, we're, uh, I know, for instance, council member, uh, Kalanock has asked, has asked, uh, has asked the city manager for a more comprehensive financial plan as to what those look like. And that's kinda the direction we're going in. We wanna see a little bit more of the numbers than we're seeing just out of the budget, before we make the next recommendation.
Yeah, I've, I've asked, I've asked the city staff to, to actually produce, uh, like, actual financial analysis as opposed to like an, an accounting framework. Cause, you know, financial analysis basically does projections over the long haul, so that like, we can do optimal pricing strategies with, with that kinda framework. And there, there's a couple of models that I know of that you can use. Um, so I'm, I'm kinda putting the onus on city staff to actually be able to justify how we price, um, and if we need to raise.
I just don't, I don't wanna, I just don't wanna do it prematurely, you know, that you, you're asking for, for the study on the new model.
Yep.
Uh, you know, and, and, you know, and modeling the rates out, out in advance. Um, I'm just a, a little concerned because I, I have, uh, I noticed that we, we do have declining, um, usage numbers, and we've had declining usage numbers. Um, and so I'm concerned if we're lowering rates and we get a continuing decline in usage number, are we cutting our own throats?
Felt a concern.
The other thing is, you know, what I'd like to see done with, uh, with surplus is, is if we have a surplus, you know, in that enterprise fund of it, of the water and sewer rates, specifically funding the water and sewer operations, that we perhaps set aside some of that money to try, try to, um, figure out a way that we can monitor, um, people's water usage, such that if you see a sudden spike, we can let somebody know, hey, you might have a leak, so they don't wait three months down the line.
Oh, yeah, I've seen those, I've seen those complaints online.
Right, right, and that's, and, and it's happened to us, so I know that it happens. Um, you know, have that money used for that, or have money maybe set aside that where we can help somebody who gets, suddenly has a thousand dollar water bill, and one can't pay it, and two, obviously, if they've been three hundred dollars a quarter for umpty-ump years, and suddenly they've got a thousand dollar water bill, something's happened here, and we should probably see what we can do to help them out.
And I think that's part, and, and part of our resolution for like the six-month plan is to, to include a water relief fund, or, or start figuring out a framework to build a water relief fund to help people in those kind of instances. Um, because it's a, it's a thing, and that's a problem, right? Like, if you're used to getting a two, three hundred dollar water bill, or whatever it is, and then all of a sudden now it's a fifteen hundred dollar water bill, are you gonna have the, the cash on hand to be able to do that? Probably not, like, most people will not, and that's, I don't think that's a, a valid ask, but it's, it does still unfortunately have to get paid it by someone, right? And, and I think that's, that's kind of a use case for the water relief fund that we've, that we've, uh, proposed in the resolution last meeting.
And I know, uh, again, Westminster City, for instance, they have their new water meters that you can actually monitor online and whatnot.
Yeah, the city manager and I have had a discussion about that.
So here'd be my thing is, Jim, how much do we have in the utility fund currently?
I don't have that in front of me.
I mean, it's a pretty.
It was seven point six mil as of last meeting.
You have the money to do it if you wanted to, but it just depends on what your priorities are.
Well, I, I, that's an operational thing for the, for the, for the operational enterprise, and it should be, that should be funded out of the, out of that fund, to, to me. We shouldn't be.
Or, or categorized as a separate fund itself, like, you could do, I don't know, some kind of separate fund for, for it, and it's managed completely independently.
But I'm just saying, that's where this has all been going to begin with. And again, this cut is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, you have seven point six mil in that fund.
And we're, and we're still, and we're still, and we're still putting into it with this budget.
With this budget.
Probably using money out of, out of the.
So what you're, we, so when they do the budget, for instance, the revenues match the expenditures.
Yes.
But.
The revenues have exceeded the expenditures, but again, you're five percent, you're talking a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You know, the seven point five million, or whatever, is there as, um, that's the structural fund to.
It's liquidity, yeah.
Right, it's liquidity that keeps us operating. Uh, we do have, we have debt service that comes out of that, we have capital projects that come out of that. So, um, you know, I, I, that's, that's, that's like a whole different volume, cause that, that fund wasn't built on excesses from water and sewer rates. That fund was built on the, um,
Impact fees?
Impact fees.
Is that true?
The combination.
It's a combination of the two. And when was the last time we saw impact fees, I guess?
Means crossing?
Means crossing in Meadowbrook.
How many years?
So, three years, four years, maybe.
So again, it's gone up steadily to seven point six mil now.
Well, some of that is because we're, we're getting interest on, or, or return on investment with that fund, right?
Yeah.
Well, the interest is included in the budget.
So last month, I, I had some numbers in front of me that I shared as far as, you know, what the revenues, what the surplus was, you know, over the past several years. Um, and I tried to contrast that with, um, with the projects that are in the draft capital improvement program, which we will get before you in the next week or two, so that you'll have time to review before June. So there, there is typically a surplus at the end of every year above the day-to-day operating expenses. And that's, we save that up to be able to do the more expensive maintenance projects for the aging infrastructure. So just, you know.
That's how the, the two funds are made, is that kickback and then the impact fees, but again, we haven't seen impact fees in years, so the steady increase has actually been the kickback from the surplus of the budget.
And, and impact fees are really to repay us for the expense that we had to develop the capacity for the growth. So really, two, two separate things. The impact fees or benefit assessments are kind of us recovering our investment to build the capacity, but then the surplus from the user rates is put aside for maintenance projects that don't necessarily increase capacity. For example, our ongoing West U Drive water line. That is just, you know, a, an aged water line that breaks regularly, um, and we lose a lot of water when, when we have a water main break. So it needs to be replaced. That's, that's maintenance of the system, that's preservation of the system, and that's what that surplus money above and beyond the, you know, day-to-day operating expenses gets set aside for, so that we can pay for these big maintenance projects. So, and, and again, you know, we, we still, with the five percent, we do, you know, we should still, um, have some surplus at the end of the year, probably just less than we've been seeing. And that just means it'll take longer, you know, if this continues, it'll just take longer to save up money for the projects. So, but again, it's, you know, it's not gonna break us in a year, so we see what happens.
You know, I just think we, rather than get on a roller coaster of, of raises and lowers, I'd, you know, I'd like to see the results of, of, Nick was talking about first, I think, before we make adjustments to the rates.
Fair. Here'd be my thing is, we know we can afford the five percent rates. Jim, all of our ARPA went to infrastructure, right?
Correct.
So we caught up on infrastructure over the years, and again, my, my question keeps coming back to what was the benefit for the residents here? And for me, that's starting to look at rate reductions. Um, and again, if the workshop provides something else, we can take a look at that. But my recommendation from the mayor's office at least would be the rate reduction for now, and to take a look later. When the workshop happens, you know, that'll be the time for staff to really make that, um, make that argument one way or the other. And again, my hope is to really involve the public, so they can be informed of why that, uh, why that decision was made. But, um, if we have the availability to provide relief for people who are currently struggling, um, and, you know, this is their tax dollars at the end of the day, um, well, technically, water bills, um, you know, why shouldn't we? And if the idea is the one sixty-nine is eventually going to, uh, somehow bankrupt a seven point six million dollar fund, you know, that's, that's just not true. Unless we're all sitting here for the next couple of decades.
Not really what I was saying, but.
No, I was talking to, I was referencing some other comments that I've seen.
Yeah.
Um, but a, but a five percent reduction is somehow not going to bank, uh, is not gonna bankrupt the city.
And the other thing to remember is that you're talking about five dollars a month per.
Yeah, for the average bill.
Per user, on the average bill.
And the other thing is, is it's kinda the same thing, you know, not to veer off, but, you know, there's been talks about the budget. Well, the budget, there was no increase to fund the positions. You can't bankrupt a city with a balanced budget. It's kinda the same thing here with the water. It's balanced in the budget currently. And we know we can afford it and still have a surplus at the end of the year for it, so why not provide the relief?
Right. I, I will make one, uh, respond to one thing that you said as far as, like, where's the benefit for the people from the ARPA money? The benefit is, by investing it in the system, we didn't have to go out and borrow money to do those projects. We're also in compliance at our wastewater treatment plant for the first time the last couple of years since, like, two thousand and six. So.
But I guess if that project that you're.
So how it benefits the people is it, that's proper management of the resources of the system. And by doing that, we didn't have to go borrow money to repair aged sewer lines and replace terracotta lines. We used the money from the federal government to do that, so that we could keep rates low. That's how it benefits the people. We invested that money in our system, so that it's more effective and efficient, and that allows us to maintain the rates where the world around us is increasing.
But I guess my issue would be, is you had that money to begin with. You didn't need the ARPA to do that project, so. I mean, why wouldn't you have done, if the project was, what, what brought you into compliance, why wouldn't you have done it before when you had the money to begin with?
It accelerated things.
It did. And again, that's what I'm saying, is, is that we're definitely in an acceleration point where we can afford a five percent reduction.
Have like a heat map or a matrix of all the, the water infrastructure, and, and like, it's, it's estimated age and, like, I, I know we talked about it a little bit in email, when I asked about, was it a copper, uh, something up, I, I don't remember what it was offhand, but like, do, do we keep records like that anywhere? To, to know how old things are and when they might be, eh, ending their, their life cycle?
Yes, we've, we've been trying to build an inventory, um, of the system, so we've done a lot of televising, uh, and we've tried to identify all of the terracotta pipe around the city. We've done manhole inventories where we note the, the materials of the manholes and the condition of them, as well as if we're able to, the pipes visible from either side of each manhole, so that we know what we're looking at. And we've tried to geolocate them as well, um, having some learning curve issues with that.
Sure.
Um, that's new technology for us. So we're in the process of building that and have been for the last couple of years, so, but the, um.
Do you have any idea when that project will be complete, and you'll, you'll, like, do you have a timeframe for that?
So the, the televising was complete, completed a couple of years ago, and that informed the capital improvement program as far as like what areas we needed to target for sewer rehabilitation. So that'll be in the, in the, that's in the capital improvement program. So that, right, that, that televising and inspection guided us as to what we needed to replace, you know, what were the most urgent projects. And based on, we based it on the condition of the lines as well as the location. So if there's a, you know, a crumbling terracotta line that's also next to a stream, that got the priority, because that's more prone to inflow and infiltration, you know, being so close to a water source, things like that, or one at the bottom of the hill, something like that. So we've kinda hit the low-hanging fruit with a lot of those projects on the sewer rehab, and we've seen flows reduced at the wastewater treatment plant substantially as a result. So we've really recovered a lot of capacity that we were losing to inflow and infiltration, which also, the more that we flow through the plant, the more the pumps have to run, the more electricity we use, the more chemicals we use, and so on. So doing those projects has helped us, even though chemicals are more expensive and things like that, and electricity goes up, we've managed to maintain the rates by becoming more efficient through these projects. So, so we have, you know, they are to a degree data-driven, because we did the research, we did the inspections. We do have, you know, we do have mapping of, of the lines. It's, some of it's very outdated, or, you know, not exactly accurate. It might not be depicted on the right side of the street, or something like that. Um, but we're, we're always trying to refine it, and, um, you know, when DPW has, has time, that a crew can go out and, you know, and do these inspections, they do them. So we're, we're building it, you know, ongoing, but the geolocating would be very helpful.
Hey, that was my question, have we gotten to, to the point where we're putting that on GIS mapping?
We've, we've been trying, but we're having some challenges with that. Um, we've used, you know, uh, cellphone data, and we have purchased some, some equipment that we're still honestly figuring out, how to, you know, how to get everything calibrated, and, and when we compare that to the cellphone data, it's, it's just been a challenge. And it's something that is, you know, kinda done in people's spare time, and there's not a whole lot of that, so.
So because it's done in, in spare time, I, I assume you don't have like a.
Not a, not a hard schedule, no.
Okay.
I know when, uh, the mayor and I took a visit of the DPW facilities, um, I believe it was Kevin, cause Randy and Kevin went with us. Uh, Kevin threw out a number of what percentage of the terracotta pipes still exists, so if you'd reach out.
I, I plan on, I plan on chatting with him as soon as possible.
He has a lot of information, so. They also stated they had around seven percent water loss a year, which obviously the new infrastructure is working, because seven percent is super impressive. Uh, cause about the average, about, is about eleven to twelve, so that's pretty impressive. And then before streetscape, they mentioned that it was around, uh, twenty, twenty-one, so that's huge.
Well, they were, well, it was, streetscape replaced all of the oldest lines in the city, and that was, you know, that, that took care of a lot of it right there. So, yeah, getting that number down under ten percent is a, is a very positive thing.
Yeah, seven percent is really good, so.
I do, I do think for kinda long-term planning, though, that having, having that project actually, uh, uh, that of, in, on, on people's spare time, or whatever, um, kinda making it a priority would probably be good for long-term planning, so, so we can understand when, when, roughly when we expect a lot of this infrastructure to start falling apart and needing to be replaced, right? Cause like, that's, that's one of the ways that we're gonna, that's one of the inputs that we're gonna need for the analysis that I'm asking with this, this water stuff, because it's an enterprise system, it's all supposed to pace for itself in theory, so without having that kind of, of, of data, it's. So, without having that kind of, of, of data, it's hard to make those projections. It could still kind of be done with, with, you know, some assumptions, but it would be a lot better if we had that kind of data and it was, it was...
Well, if I might make a suggestion, councilman, how about we take the $160,000 and use it for that, right? You know, you've just presented a good case for something that needs to be done with money that we don't have and people that we don't have available. Well, you know...
Well, again, you have the money. That's the issue, that's what you keep running into is you have the money.
We have it in the utility fund, right? If we really need to do it, we do it there.
Again, I, I do, I do get your point. I see, I see what you're saying. You've got the 160, 180K here, like let's, let's get a contractor to come to, I, I
understand what you're saying, though.
The other thing would be again, you're, you're what, four-plus million ahead of schedule. So, again, maybe the plan was to raise rates over the next couple of years if you didn't get the ARPA money, I don't know. But you're four million ahead of schedule, right? Because you had the ARPA money as far as where your capital projects were and whatnot. Again, whether you borrowed money or not to do them. But again, I don't, I don't see an issue of this breaking the city's back as far as doing a 5% relief. Again, I would almost advocate higher at this point. But, again, I, I think it's a good... I think it's good to go ahead and do. And the idea would be to readdress it at the workshop that is on the agenda for the water and sewer rates ordinance 17-2025. And it's kind of the same thing, maybe you can accelerate that mapping to where we have that for that April meeting.
We have, we have looked at software and things like that that will do, you know, use AI to do predictive, you know, failures and things like that for the infrastructure. Of course, we didn't have the money in the budget to be able to move forward with that. Just like, you know, again, we can, you know, if you prioritize one thing, you're deprioritizing something else. And day-to-day operations do not leave a tremendous amount of discretionary time for projects. So, you know, just, we need to keep that in mind that there's only so many hours in a day and...
You guys are already over capacity as it is.
Above and beyond the, the day-to-day, you know, work orders is, you know, hit or miss. So, we always have the option of hiring a consultant to go out and do inspections and, and, you know, gather the data for us. We always have the option of, you know, engaging a, a firm that can do, you know, a very in-depth analysis of the rates as we've done in the past. You know, we have those options. To do it in-house typically is going to take longer and, you know, you may not have that specific expertise, you know, for everything. So, that's going to be up for council to really decide how we want to approach those things.
And, and another option is to, to go to a contractor and, and have them pass along like the, the frameworks or models, teach you guys how to use it and then you can, can just maintain the, the models moving forward too, right? Like there's, there's a couple of different options, I think.
But we, yeah, and that's something that we are actually in conversation with our consultant engineer about as well, with both the water and sewer system, that we haven't really done that analysis for quite a few years and, and it's due again. So, we don't have a proposal at this point, but it's been kicked around a bit, so...
Thank you.
And it's not in the budget this year either, so...
Additional comments, questions, concerns before I head to vote? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name?
Nay.
Up next, we have the police manual. There was a, let me pull it up real quick. There was one suggested change we have in the police manual, which was in paragraph two, where it says the city manager, city council, and the mayor shall be informed of substantial policy updates. The suggested change would be the city manager, city council, and the mayor shall be informed in writing of any policy updates at least quarterly. I am looking for a motion and would, looking for a motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
I have a lot of concerns with this one. I think we're, you know, again, the myth of transparency, this, this ordinance puts a big sheet over what's going on with the police manual. Given our recent track record with police chiefs, not the prison company excepted, of course, I think it would be a big mistake to allow full autonomy of the police manual to arrest with the police chief. I don't have any problem with the police chief making recommendations and coming to council with those recommendations and saying this is what we need to do to update our police manual and not to let the, let the council bless it. That way, the whole community knows what, what we're going on, what's going on. Well, the way this ordinance is written, the changes can be made and the chief just informs council, this is what I've done. This could have a huge impact across the board as far as operations go, not only for the police department, but for the budget, for the overall budget as well. I think we, we need to, I don't have any problem with the, with the chief driving or rowing the boat as far as changing the police manual, updating the police manual and making it more effective, but I have a real problem with him being able to do it with, with autonomy. I think it needs to come before council and we should vote on it before, before it becomes effective.
Just, sorry, I want to circle back on one thing. Just to be clear, the city council, I think it was 2024 adopted, maybe it was 2025, it's 2024 actually, adopted the contract for Lexipol, which manages our police department like policy and whatnot. You know, the biggest idea here would be, Jim, how long have we been waiting for a police manual? Is it waiting legal review? Is that what we're waiting on?
Well, with all due respect, the police chief is not an elected official. We are. We have a responsibility to the citizens to let them know what's going on in every aspect of city government, not only the, the municipal functions that, that's involved with city hall and the annex and the public works and all the rest, but in the entire operations of the city, which includes the police department, which are subject to the city manager's authority.
So, just to check, again, we have Lexipol, which manages that policy. It's been, I think we're waiting a year now for a legal review on the manual of the policy updates from Lexipol. So, it's been waiting for a legal review to come to council, so we've been sitting...
Well, again, I don't have any problem with the chief coming to us with recommendations and we acting on them. But I don't think they should just be implemented across the board without any official approval from city government, which is us. I think, I think we, we have a responsibility of the citizens to be able to answer the questions about what's going on at the police department. And when we can say the police came to us, the police chief came to us and explained his position and we supported it, we have a lot more to go on than, well, we didn't know about that until it happened.
Well, again, you're going to be getting updates quarterly on any, any policy changes. In addition to that, council still remains oversight through their charter invested powers.
I mean, but, but that's very, that's very vague and there's no, there's no teeth in that. There needs to be then a vote of approval on any major change in the manual.
The, the teeth is, is that per your charter sanctioned authority, you still have oversight of the police department. You could come in the next day, revoke the manual if you wanted to. You could technically still add stuff to the manual. You actually don't even need that spelt out in code because...
How are we made aware of these changes?
Quarterly in writing.
Because quarterly in writing per the code. That's what, that's the change that we're making here is that it's going to be provided to council of any policy updates in writing quarterly. That's, that was that, that was that addition we made at the beginning. And then again, it is the police manual, per state law, if I'm remembering correctly, has to be made available online. So, you can actually go and look at it as a resident. You don't have, council doesn't have to try to explain it to you or say what's in it. You can actually go see it. And, you know, I, I don't know why council that doesn't consist of police officers would be in the midst of actually approving policy for police. Again, this is part of the issue we've had for the last couple of years and it's part of the reason why our police department was so hamstrung was just that constant involvement by council in the police department. And we're finally kind of getting away from that. And again, this, we've had policy updates that have been sitting in the queue for close to a year now because they've been waiting legal review to be brought from council. This basically expedites those, you're going to see them at the, you're going to see them at the next quarter. And again, it says at least quarterly. The chief could adopt them and then write to the next day on them. But the idea is you will still have oversight and if you really want to check day-to-day, I mean, you can go into that manual and check. The police department's right down the road as well. You have access to the police chief, you have access to the city manager.
And Lexipol is, is like a nationally recognized thing.
Where is our expertise on being able to rule on the, the efficacy of the, the different policies?
We, we, we have that responsibility to, to approve policy and to change policy. And we're the only ones that can do that.
But where is our expertise that allows us to be able to do that? Why, why won't we let, why shouldn't we let...
Based on their input and recommendations from the police department.
And just so you're aware, you know, that's not true either. There's a thing called administrative policy that is separate from legislative policy. You can still have administrative policy and that's basically what this police manual's kicking back to is be, it's becoming an administrative policy.
Yeah, I, I think...
But like the whole, one of the whole points of Lexipol though is like, it tries to make sure it's aligned with like current law and best practices in, in policing. I mean, it, it, it deals with like legal exposures and complaints. I mean, it, it's a whole, whole manual. I mean, if we really have questions about it, we've got the man himself over there. Like he can come up and talk about it.
I have no...
And he can do, do it way better than I can, but I mean, this is...
No question about the ethics of our police chief. That's not even out of this conversation.
You're, the, the conversation is you're, you're not sure about adopting the manual, though.
We have a responsibility to approve policy and, and in a transparent way so that everybody's aware of it before it's a policy.
Which is, which is why like all, all of the Lexipol manuals are available online, right? Like so literally me or you, we can go, we can, we can look at it, we, if we have, have problems, like, you know, we can search it and as council people, we can, we can bring it up and be like, and, and question it or, or do whatever we need to do. Like this is, this is as transparent as, as I think you can make it without like literally sending it to everybody's, buddy's doorstep, right? Like, I, I don't, I, I just, I don't see transparency as, as the, as, as an issue on this one.
I mean, that's, that's the next thing, no offense to, the question would be how many...
The mayor talks about transparency, but this is cloak and dagger.
It isn't. I mean, realistically, it's a...
If it's available to everyone online, how is that cloak and dagger? Like that doesn't make sense.
The policy's available to everybody online and not only that, again, we, we have a pretty, this is a pretty good audience for the council chambers. You know, we got four people in the audience. This is again, higher than the average. And then I don't know how many people are watching online. I, I don't know.
Checking the mayor's mouth, frankly.
Sorry, sorry. The, the podium's hiding Alex, so... But again, my bad, five people show...
You need to grow, buddy.
Actually, we are greatly exceeding the average right now. And again, you know, I don't know how many viewers we have online, but realistically, you're talking about the policy having to come before you. So, five, 10, 15, maybe 15 people can see that it happened at this meeting when everybody has access to it online to go to the police manual. And again, this is managed by Lexipol per a contract that we, that council did in 2024. It just has been caught up in the other things that have been caught up through, through the pipeline of items.
This is modern, making sure that we're ultimately modernizing our police force. And, and again, I think it's, it's making it as transparent as you possibly can, as you possibly can without like beating somebody over the head with the manual, right?
Just as a question, is the current manual available online?
Chief, is the current manual available online?
Where? Just, so, just so that everybody would know, I, I, I've never looked for it, so I don't know, but...
They go to the city website in the police department and it's, it's one of the dropdowns or icons within that, that area. Yes, and that's where the Lexipol thing would be too, I assume, right?
Lexipol will be the policy.
Right, right, and it'll be there, like it'll be the, the document.
Right. Any additional comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, that's just as transparent as literally anything else that's on the website. And I don't, again, I don't know how, how you can make that any, any more transparent.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council before I head to vote?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name?
Nay.
Carries. Next up, we have ordinance 11-2025, executive administrative assistant. I don't think we had any comments for changes, right, Jim?
No.
Oh, there was one. I think the previous one still had the chief of police in it. The current one does not.
Right, we took that out.
So, that, again, that was technically out. We just forgot to send the updated one. So, I'm looking for a motion to adopt on this.
Motion to adopt.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Again, in, in addition to the bureaucracy and the red tape involved with people navigating city government, I, I don't think it's necessary and just adding another layer to the overall system of things that's already overlaid.
Quite the contrary, I think that the city manager is so...
This has nothing to do with red tape.
Overburdened with what he has to do.
He's doing three or four jobs.
I think this is a positive step that I've recommended for years.
And just, just to clarify, you know, this isn't like a new executive position or anything like that. It's an administrative assistant that is a supplemental officer of the city. The whole idea behind this employee is basically to supplement our departments. It doesn't add an additional layer of bureaucracy. It just allows us to process things faster and it allows like, let's say, let's say Parks and Rec needs a, needs help because they're going through an extensive grant process and they could really use that help. That's where this employee could basically fit in and help in that regard. The other idea is again, to make sure if we ever get in a situation where we're down multiple department heads, this person could interimly fill that role while we're look, while we're doing the search. Because again, we can't keep operating like this with a city manager's assuming multiple roles at a time. Things have to keep flowing, things have to keep functioning. So, this is mainly a safeguard to make sure that things do keep flowing in the event of a crisis or the event of a...
Even, even prior to there being, you know, that level of crisis.
Yeah, we still had...
You know, I've seen the city manager in operation and he does a great job, but I, I have long thought he's been overwhelmed. I think the position...
There's only so long you can be over capacity for.
You're good? Okay. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Up next, we have establishment of information technology officer and agency designation. There was one change between now and the last one. We took out D because it's not really, it's redundant. 34-9, there was some rewriting of the language there to make it flow a little bit better.
Sorry, could you repeat that? You took out, oh, D, I see here.
D, D is...
Yeah, D, D is redundant, so it's crossed out. 34-9, there was some change of the, I think the first two sentences have been changed to make it flow a little bit better word-wise. But other than that, it remains the same as it was introduced.
I just...
Let me get to motion. Looking for a motion for adoption?
Motion to adopt.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns by council?
No, neither. Now, the only I, I have, it's, it's in the wording of the 34-9. Appointed, each appointed position listed here and shall be an officer of the city unless otherwise specified by charter and shall be considered an agency head for, for the city for their respective office. What happens when we use a corporation? For example, the city engineer is not an individual person.
They're still an appointed position.
The auditor is not an individual person. You know, those aren't individual heads or, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm not sure that, that the language as used here applies because of that. I mean, you're...
It does because it's, what it's specifically speaking to actually is the appointed position. So, each appointed position, which even if you...
But you're appointing a corporation and not an individual and...
But there's, there's still being appointed to the, there's still being appointed to the office. So, even when you appoint the firm, for instance, the firm is technically the appointed city attorney. When you appoint a firm for engineer, it's kind of the same thing. You are appointing that firm to the position. That's why those positions have appointments. So, again, this is actually correct in the idea of it saying each, each appointed position and then shall be an officer because technically they are an officer holder, whether it's the, whether it's an individual person or whether it's the firm, they are holding an office for the city and...
But I, I'm not sure that that, that that follows that a corporation.
Shall be considered an agency head?
Shall be, yes.
Yeah. So how that, how that follows is think of it like this. The agency that has got the appointment for the contract or whatever, they technically still say who we're dealing with essentially. You know, I know there's multiple people with the city engineer, their firm. There's multiple people who brought in an attorney firm. There's going to be multiple people there that we're going to be dealing with. So it isn't necessarily one specific individual at any given time. But you have appointed them to that position. That position is the office holder of the city, which is basically what that, what that whole section's flowing off of. And then next, that office, that appointed position shall be considered an agency head of the city for their respective office. And in that regard, if you look through our code and you look through our charter, there are specific, there are specific positions where the removal authority was never put in there. One of those was actually the police chief. They added it later and said to council, but that technically doesn't work because of a charter rule. But essentially, the reason, if you're just basing it off of when they put it in, the reason would be because those are meant to be considered agencies. If you look elsewhere where it says the city council has a removal authority, it is spelt out there. But there are multiple instances in the city code where the actual removal authority isn't spelt out. And that either defaults to the appointing official, which would be the mayor, because the mayor does appointments, or that would go because they're an agency. If I were to think of the city attorney, for instance, that is an agent of the city. You know, the agency of the city then would be that a firm as well, who is representing the city. Because if you're acting on behalf of the city, if you're doing those, if you're providing the legal advice, if you're going to the court cases, if you're doing all that, you are an agent of the city whether you like it or not.
Well, no, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning the fact that that's an agency of the city. I just, I'm just concerned with the considered an agency head of the city for their respective office. And that, that to me consigns an individual and not a firm, but.
Well, it's, it's kind of the same thing. So I appoint, for instance, I appoint the city engineer. City engineer would almost imply it's a person, right? But actually, when you go into the language, it says a firm to act as the city engineer.
For practical purposes though, like what, what's, what's the objection? I'm trying, because like, even if we use a firm, like what, who would object to us using a firm? And how, how, how would, and how do you foresee that creating a problem in this disorder? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I'm, it's one of those things that just is, it is not striking me right. And perhaps functionally, I'm just barking up a tree here, but I, it, it just doesn't read right to me. And that, that's, I don't know, in the back of my mind, there's something not quite right. And I really can't, I'm having trouble finding that, but.
I mean, is this not something we could just kind of take a common sense approach? And if it becomes a problem, we amend?
This part? I mean, that's.
I mean, like if that, if the corporation things end up being a problem, then we just amend it, amend it to, to make it jive with how it needs to jive, but.
And in truth.
For common sense and practical purposes, like I don't, I don't see that as a problem.
It's not going to, because if you look in that offices and employees section, you know, multiples of those actually say you're appointed in a firm for this, but it is still the appointment of somebody to a city office.
Operationally, like for example, with the auditor or the engineer, it is not being an issue.
Right.
I'm just.
That was about to be my next question. Like I know you guys have these firms for other things.
I'm not sure about codifying it in the language, but I can't really see how I can come up with something better, so.
Well, and if, like I said, if it's a problem and like we need to revisit it, then we figure out the language later. But I mean.
Like I said, I don't object to what we're doing there. I just, I just, like I said, there's something in the language.
Yeah, something, something in jive, right. Yeah, I got you.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, I'm going to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. Up next, we have the temporary administrative suspension. So there's been a list of changes in this. So I'm going to go over them real quick. The period shall not exceed, it used to be six days. It's been brought down to 40. It used to be seven days for notification. It's been brought down to as soon as possible, but no later than three calendar days. Shall provide written notes to the city manager and city council. Next, we have.
Can't be suspended again within the same calendar year.
Suspended again in the same calendar year, added to the council agenda. And then we've added section F, which actually goes and further explains what this applies to. And this should take care of some of the concerns of, you know, ethics or things that technically aren't administrative purview. You couldn't have done that to begin with, but this further explains it that this only falls to items that are under the administrative implementation scope of the mayor and city manager, which again, is something we still have discretion on to begin with because enforcement of code falls to the executive and the administration. But basically, all this does is further explain and dialogue that, that this isn't meant to apply to boards, commissions, or anywhere else where somebody else has the authority to enforce this or enforce that. So again, this is, we've added the safeguards and rails that I think really address a lot of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting in regards to it. And with that, I'll look for a motion of adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
This is, I'm still not, not pleased at all with this. I just think that this is an opportunity to ask for trouble.
So this is just, this isn't granting the mayor a new power, right? This is formalizing an existing power because the executive has.
That's really the main problem.
I don't, I don't know that, that, that's.
It also creates reporting requirements too. So like if, if they're, if they're shadow suspending or not enforcing, like you're, per this, they're supposed to let us know immediately and it's supposed to come on our docket. Like that, to me, I think that's one of the big benefits here, right? Like if any mayor is shadow not enforcing something, like we need to be informed of it. And that's what this kind of codifies.
Because just, just to be clear, administration, sorry, administration cannot enforce code that isn't legal or doesn't make sense. If there is code in there that is not legal.
Right, but that, right, that provision exists in state law to start with.
That just simply overrides council's action. That's what that does.
No, this doesn't, because again, we can, to be frank with you, the administration can already, can already be like, hey, there's no way for us to reasonably enforce this. Well, you know, just don't enforce it. And you guys don't have any notification. We just don't do it.
And this also spells out that, that he can't touch important things like, like he can't say, oh, I don't like that, that thing in, in the ethics code about taking gifts. I'm going to suspend this so I can take a million dollars from some developer somewhere and, you know, not have to report it anymore because, you know, it's been under suspension for this play. Like you, this says you can't touch that because that's not an administrative, what is it, administrative enforcement action, right? So, so like I think, I know I fought hard for this one because like after the, the last meeting, you know, I did think you guys brought up some good points. And I was like, hey, I think we need to add some guardrails here. And I mean, I, I think, I think they did a pretty good job of adding a lot of the guardrails that, that really, really hit, I think, the objections you guys were trying to articulate. Like, I mean, he can't suspend habeas corpus, for example. You know, that's, that's, that's not, fortunately, that's not in the, in the power of the mayor. But, you know, like it also means that he can't, he can't just like wipe out boards or, or say, you know, I don't like that, that whatever.
Right, because the concern, the concern obviously is things like, you know, well, I'm just going to suspend the campaign finance laws.
Which you cannot, because that's not, that's not.
And, and, and I, and so I do appreciate.
That could be done.
Well, but that's, that's in.
Well, that's what, so that's why.
That's the, that's the guardrail. That paragraph, F is intended.
I fought hard for that, guys.
Of all the bad legislation we've passed tonight, this is the worst.
I'm sorry, we're writing so much bad legislation, Jim. I apologize.
I, I am, this is, and this is.
We'll try and do better.
This is a particular matter that I would want legal sufficiency from an attorney on.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Yeah. And, and I, I would get behind you guys on, on asking for legal sufficiency on this one. I'm, I'm okay with that.
I, yeah, so, you know, I would.
I, I do think it's legally sufficient.
My one request would be legal sufficiency from the next city attorney. That'd be my only request.
Sure. I'm okay with that.
Then how about we, how about we table this until we have a new city attorney?
Or approve based on legal, once it's had legal sufficiency signed off by the next city attorney. So again, this won't even go into effect until it has legal sufficiency.
I'll go with that.
Yeah.
Love compromise. Well, again, I, I think we did a really good job compromising on that. I mean.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that you've done that, that you did that work to, you know, try to put those guardrails in. And I just want to make sure that the guardrails are strong enough.
I fought all weekend for it. You can ask him. I sent him so many emails. I sent him emails. I was like, hey.
It was never meant to be something that, like how we talked about at the last meeting. Again, it's mainly meant to kick stuff to your agenda.
And it's not, and it isn't about in current intent. It's what the next guy might do with it. And that's, you know, you've got to be legislating with that in mind.
Yeah, that's totally valid. Yeah.
I do think we've really added those guardrails in here. Again, that F really clarifies it. Can't go beyond that.
Yeah. I mean.
Can I get a motion of adoption pending legal sufficiency by the next appointed city attorney? Or you could just say I, I so move or something.
I so move.
Looking for a second?
I'll second him.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, name? Good. Up next, we got police protection standards. I'm trying to think if we, oh, it's okay. So we took out the redundant line in D and we kept it how it is for the two patrol officers for a thousand residents. And again, that the chief can make the, can make the exemption if he believes we're adequately covered. So again, the only thing that changed between the introduction and now is the removal of that first sentence in D, which was, I think, what was requested at the last meeting. Looking for a motion of adoption?
Motion to adopt.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
How does this improve or enhance the current public facilities, adequate public facilities ordinance we have now?
So my explanation of.
Why is it necessary? I guess I'm.
My explanation of this would be that the previous one included the major, it included the chief, it included the lieutenant. I don't think you would include those in inadequate facilities because those aren't people who are going to be actively on patrol. When you're talking adequate, adequate facilities for a new development or something like that, you're making sure you have boots on the ground, you're able to keep up with traffic, traffic, your speed enforcement, everything else going on in the area. So again, this is basically just clarifying that it didn't mean whoever's in the police department, that's not the number. It's going off of the actual patrol level officers, which in my mind is everybody lieutenant and below. While the lieutenant does hit the streets every once in a while, he still mainly is administrative in his role.
Yeah, and I have no issue.
I was gonna say, you don't want, you don't want spreadsheet monkeys like me being counted as, you know, a patrol officer, right? Like that, that's the point of this. Boots on the ground is really what we, what we want to be counted.
And I don't have any real problem. It's just that we are, this, this then, you know, we're actually, you know, encouraging and codifying, you know, an increase to the police department. The question is, can we afford that? And that's, that's the only thing that, that jumps to me is that, so we're now, you know, if you are taking those officers out of the, the administrative staff officers out of the equation, then that leaves us, are we now three officers short? And how do we hire three more officers and how do we pay for that?
Well, I think the next question would be whether the intent, you know, I doubt somebody made this with the intent that administrative officers were meant to be counted in adequate facilities.
I don't, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying, it just, if we, if we codify doing this, then we tie ourselves to, to coming up with the money to pay for three more police officers.
If I remember correctly, we already had one in the, in the current.
We already have one, right. We have one. But my understanding is that he was being tied to the drug task force, so.
So one officer is going to drug task force.
Right. So is that, so is that drug task force officer then included in the?
Technically, it's, technically, it's patrol equivalent police officer. I mean, the only, technically, the exclusion.
I mean, I think it's.
The exclusion here is going to be back here where it says this shall exclude command or administrative positions such as chief, major, lieutenant.
Right. Like I said, my, my, my concern is that, that it ties us to, you know, if, if somebody, God forbid, somebody gets shot somewhere or, or there, you know, oh, there weren't enough police on, on duty because we didn't fully staff the police force to what we said we were going to.
Well, it's kind of the same.
And then we get sued for that.
It's kind of the same when you think about it now, Jim, right? We're, we're one, well, now that we've added one to the budget, I guess we're up to par with 8,500. Because before, we were still technically out of this. Because we're at 8,500. So the next officer would have kicked into effect.
How many, how many patrol officers, chief, that we have?
Here brings it down to 13.
Is that 16 patrol equivalent officers or is that 16 total?
We're 13 patrol equivalent officers. We've added ones that takes us to 14. So we are still, if we're 8,000 in population, we still don't quite meet this. So my, my, right, my concern is that if we do codify that we're going to do this and don't do it because we can't afford to do it, and God forbid, something happens and somebody says, well, this happened because you didn't have enough officers on your police force that you said you were going to have.
I think what it also allows.
So I'm just concerned about opening ourselves up to that.
In, in paragraph B though, it, it says that the, the police chief can designate the fact that he, he certifies that we have adequate.
So we still have the ability to say that we have adequate coverage through the police chief, through his formal recommendation.
But if we're going to do that, then why even have the ordinance? I guess I'm, you know.
Because what, what this is doing is basically clarifying that there's, I mean, I hope nobody wrote this in the idea that administrative officers were going to count towards the overall ratio of officers to residents. This is actually fixing that. And then it's codifying what we're saying those, or who are excluded are. I mean, realistically, the other thing would have just been to do a resolution saying that when it says officers and 180 dash 22A11, that that means patrol level officers. You could have done that through a resolution clarifying the ordinance as well. But what this does is further expand that, actually clarifies what those three are and then also says the police chief can basically override it. So you still have the ability, because there's, I mean, there's development that you could possibly say that, yes, we could have that even though we don't meet the officer count. So the, you know, the chief could say, yes, we still currently meet the needs of that development. It'd really depend on the size. And the next thing would be is you could use this as a bargaining chip as far as adequate facilities goes and says, hey, you know, we don't meet the needs of your development that you're trying to do. You know, obviously, we're going to have to figure out a way to meet those needs. Again, this, this opens up a couple of different doors. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
The other, and one other, one other question, sorry, is that this references section 180. Section 180 is not, section 180 of the code is subdivision of land and has nothing to do with police. I don't know. I was.
Chapter 180?
Is it?
That's where the APFO is embedded.
That's where the adequate facilities is. Go to 180.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. I wasn't sure how that applied. I didn't, I didn't read that all the way down. So I was, I wasn't sure how that applied. So thank you. That answered that question.
Gunn, once more additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Section A, if the commission determines that the ratio of patrol equivalent officers to citizens is not more than two officers per every 1,000 residents, should that be less than or flipped?
Yeah, it should be not less than.
Yes, I think you're right.
Yeah. I mean, that's, do we flip that? Does it need to be flipped?
Yeah, it's just confusing. Just say less. It's more plain language.
Okay. Jim, what was your suggested change on it again?
It's not less than two officers.
Not less, it should be not less than, not, not more than. Yeah.
So then with that, not less than, I am looking for a motion of adoption with, as amended then.
Adoption amended.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name?
Opposed.
Carries. So next, we're going to the water and sewer rates ordinance 17 dash 2025, which is going to be the workshop that we've discussed a little bit about. I don't, there was no additions. I think we subtracted the one.
There you go.
So I know last time we talked about subtracting section one, making section two, section one, because section one was. one because section one was redundant. We did that and everything else remains the same from when it was introduced last week. I'm looking for a motion of adoption on that.
Motion to adopt.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Sounds good. Did you have a city manager report or am I good to keep going down?
Nothing really pertinent, less few drives going along as expected. Section twos, phase twos in and water's being tested. That's about the only update I've got.
Sounds good, proceeding down to new business, monthly financial report.
Didn't we do these last week?
No, we saved for this meeting because they were...
Okay, that's right, thank you.
They didn't get a chance to look at these. So, monthly financial report, looking for a motion in regards to it?
I'm moved to accept the financial report.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Up next, we have accounts payables, looking for a motion in regards to that.
Motion, sorry, what's the motion you're looking for?
Uh, motion, motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Last up, we got ratification of Meadow Brook's section six surety reduction. Oh, here it is. Yep.
I saw this come through my email earlier, can you give me a high level? What is this?
So, our standard practice with our, with development projects, where we are going to accept infrastructure from a development, is through our public works agreement. The developer has to post a bond or surety to make sure that the work is completed and then once the city accepts the infrastructure and the new roads or water and sewer lines and so on become city infrastructure, they're also required to post a maintenance bond for a two-year period. So, in this case, with Meadow Brook section six, and that's the area around Hibiscus Street and the upper end of Bowie Mill and where Crimson comes into Bowie Mill, that part of Meadow Brook. That maintenance surety is now two years old, so we've gone out, re-inspected everything, gave the developer a punch list of things to fix, he's fixed it, we re-inspected, so we're good to release the maintenance surety because they've fixed everything and basically their warranty period is up.
You inspected stuff, it passed muster and the surety's up, so...
It's just formalizing that we can release it now.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So I will be looking for a motion to ratify the release of the maintenance surety of Meadow Brook's section six.
I'm moved.
I'll be looking for a second.
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Up next, we have public comment pertaining to agenda items. Do we have any public comment pertaining to agenda items? Seeing nobody move, I am heading towards adjournment. I'm looking for a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.